I'd call this meeting of the Monticello City Council to order. Please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this moment, I would ask everyone to bow their heads and observe a moment of silence for Officer Chris Oberheim, who was tragically killed last week in the line of duty as a police officer in Champaign. Our prayers are with his family and friends, and we look forward to celebrating his life and keeping hope alive for him, so. Thank you. At this time, Rodney Burris will, from Open Hearts Foursquare Church, will lead us in prayer.
So Father God, thank you so much for bringing us together safely again, and we ask you to help us to recognize how Chris's life affected so many, and therefore how our lives affect so many. Help us not take things lightly. Help us to make decisions that are good and best for our city. We thank you and praise you for the wisdom and knowledge and care to take for the things we're deciding. We love you and praise your name. Amen.
Move. Roll call please, Mark.
Mr. Ferricks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens? Ms. Harland? Here. Mr. Reed? Ms. Boat?
Here.
Mr. Brock?
Here.
Mr. Burris?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. Chief has indicated that there's no one in person who wishes to address the council. Is there anyone online?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to consent agendas. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is the approval of documents and action items as listed. Claims report, claims dated May 11, 2021 through May 24, 2021. Meeting minutes, City Council meeting minutes, May 10, 2021. City Council closed session meeting minutes, May 10, 2021. Planning and zoning meeting minutes, April 19, 2021. The budget report, April 2021, and the treasurer's report, April 2021. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So move. Is there a second? Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, roll call please.
Excuse me. Mr. Ferricks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Sow?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Here.
Thank you. Moving on to the mayor's report. There are 71 businesses in the Monticello area that are actively hiring to fill over 180 full and part-time positions of all levels, trades, and experience. View the local job board of the city's website for a listing or visit the Piatt County Workforce Development Office for workforce assistance. The Monticello Family Aquatic Center opens for the season next Monday, May 31 at noon. Please abide by all posted public health and safety requirements. The citywide garage sales are next weekend, June 3rd, 4th, and 5th. There will also be, at the conclusion of this meeting this evening, an opening for the position of alderman in Ward 1. If you are interested in applying for this position, go to the Monticello City website and you can fill out the application there. New business. Resolution 2021-25, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Monticello approving an encroachment permit. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city received an application for an encroachment permit from University of Illinois Department of Civil and Environmental Engineering to construct a lab to monitor the Saginaw River. They're wanting to place it on the city-owned public right-of-way near the intersection, I guess, the south and east quadrant of County Farm Road and Bridge Street. I included, copied that permit application, the river lab plan, and as well as obviously the resolution to the road order this evening, so.
Okay, are there any comments or questions?
Yeah. Is this like a ask forgiveness instead of permission? Because there's already six pylons down there for where the building's going to be, so I'm just a little confused.
This, that's a great point. This started, I think, in 2018 or 2019, and they were communicating with a variety of staff, and then miscommunication. They thought they had permission, and I came and drove into town and saw that, and I thought, what's going on now? And so we just, it's part of the process. Again, they dated back for a few years, and I think it revolves around some funding.
Yeah.
So on and so forth, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we notified them, hey, you got to get a permit, you know, fill out all this.
Is this going to change? Are they going to continue to do stuff off the bridge then, or is this going to facilitate doing everything there instead of on the bridge?
I think they'll still use the bridge to keep it. And this will be an added piece to that, what they're studying.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-25, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Monticello approving an encroachment permit?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ferricks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Passless?
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2021-26, a resolution for the approval of conditional use. Doug Hughesen Gay owner, 800 East Old Route 47. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doug Hughesen Gay is the owner of 800 East Old Route 47. He is wishing to construct a 20-foot by 40-foot in-ground pool with plans to install a four-foot fence with an automatic pool cover, which is, that's either a six-foot fence or that four-foot fence allowed with the automatic pool cover. Mr. Hughesen Gay already has an accessory structure on his property, so in order to, for him to construct this pool, the planning and zoning board, and then obviously this city council needs to grant him a conditional use. As for our ordinances, we advertised in the newspaper, PZB met last Monday and voted unanimously to approve this conditional use, seven yes, zero no. Mr. Hughesen Gay is at a higher commitment, cannot be here this evening, I believe Doug LaCron, who's going to be later on this evening, is a relation to Doug Hughesen Gay, he's a Hughesen Gay. So if you have any questions, I think Doug might be able to answer.
Are there any questions?
Upon completion, is there going to be like an invitation for research and development for? Okay. I mean, the mayor was asking me about a pool, and now there's an opportunity for pools. This is why, this is why you can't make. I just checked it. Make sure we're covering. Okay. No, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Any comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-26, a resolution for the approval of conditional use? Doug Hughesen Gay owner, 800 East Old Route 47 for a plumbing pool and fence? So move. Is there a second? Second. Can I have a roll call, please? I'm sure there's no more comments.
Mr. Ferricks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Passless?
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2021-27, a resolution for the approval of conditional use. Kristen and Doug LaCron owners, 811 County Farm Road. Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very similar situation. Obviously Doug LaCron is present tonight. He also needs a conditional use to allow an in-ground pool because he already has an accessory structure, the detached garage. Again, the public notices were sent out, the public advertisement paper was done. Planning and zoning board met last Monday, and again unanimously voted for approval, seven yes, zero no. And like you said, Doug, that's why I put it to 811 County Farm Road, those new houses. So they wish to put in a pool, and I don't know how much a pool pass costs, Mr. LaCron.
Could not be as inexpensive as the City of Monticello's, I'm sure. Any comments or questions?
Same situation with the rolling cover tall fence. Thank you.
Any others? I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2021-27, a resolution for the approval of conditional use. Kristen and Doug LaCron owners, 811 County Farm Road for a pool and fence, I assume. So move. Is there a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ferricks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Passless?
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2021-28, a resolution for the approval of conditional use. Adam and Ashley Rosenberry owners, 1801 Church Crossing. Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another pool. In the summer of 2020, city staff inadvertently approved a building permit for an in-ground pool and pavilion shed structure on the subject property's own suburban residential. The in-ground pool, in conjunction with the shed that exceeds, requires conditional use, permit to allow for additional accessory structures. City staff and applicants are requesting a conditional use permit be approved, for the property and structures into legal conforming status. Staff has no concerns with the project, as it relates to lot density, setback regulations, or other areas of potential conflict common with requests of similar nature. Again, the public notice was published in the Piatt County Journal. Adjacent property owners were notified as required, and staff received no comments regarding this request. Again, the PZB met last week and unanimously voted to approve this conditional use, seven yes, zero no. It's recommended city council discuss and approve Resolution 2021-28 as.
Any questions of Terry? Comments? Hearing or seeing none, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2021-28?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ferricks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Passless?
Resolution 2021-29, a resolution for the approval of conditional use. Tom Gilbert owner, 916 North State Street. Administrator, Summers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this property has two items in front of you this evening, so this first one is Resolution 2021-29, and then again is for an in-ground pool. The applicant would like to construct 16-foot by 38-foot in-ground pool with plans to install either a six-foot fence as required by ordinance or a four-foot fence with an automatic safety cover on the pool. The property currently has an existing accessory structure, the detached garage, and the pool would constitute an additional accessory structure. The City of Monticello zoning ordinance does not allow for an additional accessory structure without a conditional use permit. Because this property is a contributing property located within the North State Street National Historic District, the Monticello Historic Preservation Commission reviewed the plans and submitted their comments to the planning and zoning board for the record. I believe you had those, again, in your council packets, I believe. They took no exception to the in-ground pool, and that's what we're discussing with Resolution 2021-29. Again, the planning and zoning board met after the required public notice and adjacent property notifications. And again, the PZB voted unanimously, seven yes, zero no, to approve conditional use to allow for the in-ground pool. Recommended city council discuss Resolution 2021-29. It's presented.
Mr. Gilbert's in the audience tonight, right? Are there any questions of Mr. Gilbert? Questions or comments?
This is for the pool.
For the pool, yes, I understand that. Just for the pool. Hearing or seeing none, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2021-29? So move. Is there a second?
Second.
One more chance. Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ferricks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Passless?
Thank you. Moving on to Ordinance 2021-30, an ordinance approving variance requests. Tom Gilbert owner, 916 North State Street. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This deals with the same exact property that we just discussed. The owner would like to replace the existing detached garage, an existing non-conforming structure that currently sits on the north front and rear property lines with a 20-foot by 48-foot, 1,244 square foot detached garage in the same location as the existing garage and the adjacent concrete patio lying east of it. The property fronts public street on three sides, making it have front yards on the north, which is Oglesby Street, and the east of State Street, and a rear yard on the west side of Charter Street, and a side yard on the south side front. City of Monticello zoning ordinance does not allow accessory buildings to be located in the front yard, and the structure must be five feet off the rear yard line. Additionally, the maximum square footage of detached garage shall not exceed 1,000 square feet. This was, again, 1,244. Additionally, Mr. Gilbert is requesting variance to the location and maximum area for the detached accessory structure in RD Zone, and a variance to the setback requirements in RD Zone, reducing the north front yard and west rear yard setbacks from 30 feet and 10 feet expected to zero feet. So Oglesby and Charter Streets. Because this property is a contributing property located within North State Street National Historic District, the Monticello Historic Preservation Commission reviewed the plans and submitted their comments to the planning and zoning board for the record. Again, the PZB met last Monday, and held a public hearing as required regarding the variance request for replacement of the garage. Members of the public, as well as submitted red comments, stated concerns as they relate to the consistency of the roofline and windows with the principal structure, the homeowner not utilizing or preserving the existing historic structure, sightlines for vehicular traffic, and the size of the accessory structure as it relates to the principal structure. After further discussion, the PZB again voted unanimously to approve this request, seven yes and zero no, to, I believe, the footprint, Mr. Gilbert corrected, I'm wrong, the footprint of the existing garage and concrete patio and its relation to the property line setbacks. That's where this new structure is going to go. It won't encroach closer than what it is today.
If anything else, we'll move back just a little bit to make sure.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions?
Entrance from the street is on the west side off Oglesby Charter. On the north side off Oglesby. No entrance off Charter at all. Walk-in door on the south. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm speaking as the neighbor to the south. I think this is a great addition. We kind of share the same issue with, you know, owning a historic home on State Street, and yet, you know, at this price point, having garages that don't really meet the needs, and there are structures that, yes, they were, they were built in a certain era and a certain type, but they, they've deteriorated. I have one as well, that don't serve the needs of 21st century families. So I think it's great that we have families that move in that want to take care of the property and improve it. You know, I think one of the things that, as a council, we need to be sensitive to is, you know, the needs of property owners there, to have garages that meet their needs. I think the plan looks great as far as I'm concerned.
Anyone else? Thanks, Mike.
The only question about, about looking the same as the rest is, are you using similar windows? I mean, you're making it look.
I wouldn't use similar windows.
You've got to match this house, right?
Because right now, the existing garage doesn't have any windows except for the wall. It would look like a house. I mean, I have the picture that you see now.
Yeah, yeah.
These windows and windows that's in the house. I don't exactly know if I'm going to use that. Where is that?
Side lights?
With the shut. I haven't been to yet, but it's been designed.
Just out of curiosity, what's this last picture?
That was, they talked about the side lines, and actually, if you can find out if there's bushes there, you can't see down, I grow the door. So actually, look at the garage, the bushes we've got, and you'll be able to see down it.
Cool.
So actually, the side lines and safety is going to be proved, bushes that they mounted there.
Would there actually be enough room to park a vehicle there?
There will be, that's why I actually, where it sits now, I could be a little bit further back to make sure there's enough room. So it might actually be further away than loaded and disstructured. And off of even the two parking spaces, that are harder for just to park.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to waive second reading? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Need a roll call?
Mr. Ferricks?
Yes, ma'am.
Stevens?
Yes. Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2021-30, an ordinance approving variance requests for Tom Gilbert owner, 916 North State Street? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, a roll call, please, Mark.
Mr. Ferricks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Passless?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Moving on to alderperson's reports, we'll start with Mary.
So.
About a school party, something. How happy.
Students and staff.
I forget you big bucks people stay.
It's okay. So in the last couple of weeks, there have been things that have caught my attention around town. All the rain we had, I saw the city guys out scooping leaves out of, out of the storm drains, and thought, wow, that's great. And just all the activities with the ballgames going on, but, and wanted to be sure to thank Mr. Ferricks for his service on the council. It's been great working with them, and I just would be remiss if I did not talk about the, the outpouring of support our community has shown for the Oberheim family. Watching those flags be displayed today, I saw Alderman Kuhn out there helping to, to install the flag, so many people from the city, the township, surrounding communities. I'm, I'm proud of Monticello. I'm sorry that it's taken something like this to bring to light what we take for granted, but this is Monticello, and this is what we do for our community.
Thank you. Wendell?
I would completely join in with Mary and her situation. John, I do thank you for your service and wish you the very best, or as you want, moving on. Things have looked good around town. Chief, I address to you, and this may have been taken care of, there is a property at the end of Jackson on Adams Street that is currently have a for-sale sign in it that is severely overgrown. The realtor has neglected to mow it. It may have been taken care of in the last day or two, but I don't mind.
She thinks so.
No, it's, I don't.
Mike, unlock him.
And I will address, because I didn't have a chance to talk to Terry, the situation I spoke to you about the other day, did that gentleman speak to you? Have you heard any more about that? Mr. Burnsmeier, the thing I was bringing?
No, I have not heard anything else.
Okay, I'm going to quickly address that, and possibly for next month. Scott Burnsmeier approached me, you know Scott, everybody knows Scott, good guy, not fault in Scott at all. I would, and I told him I would join in his request. He was wondering if we could consider the possibility of honorarily naming a street in Officer Oberheim's name. My suggestion was that, since they live on Chaucer, and Chaucer has just, just runs through that subdivision, doesn't affect any other part of town, that we could possibly consider that as honorary Oberheim Way, or honorary Chris Oberheim, whatever. Wouldn't require people to change their addresses, nothing with the post office, nothing would be an honorary designation. I spoke to Terry about it, and he was okay, but he said we need to speak to Oberheim's first. So Mike, I'm in that position too. I would not propose that without going to speak to Amber and the family, you know, because it's going to be there. We're going to put some small honorary designations on those five or six street signs that run north and south there. And if she's not upset about that, I would like to see that on the schedule for next month, that we would move ahead with that. But some, we'll talk, we'll speak to her and see what happens, but so we'll know, it's not a surprise. But I think it would be a great, an honor for him and an honor for the family, and as long as she's not upset about, you know, a reminder, a daily reminder, I guess, but I'm sure she's not ever going to forget it, so that's not a point to be made. So anyway, and that's, that's all I have. I just, I'd like this to consider that next month, if at all possible. Thank you.
Wendell? Rodney?
Everybody takes my thunder, so ditto and ditto. Are you sure you can move? Sure you got to move? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Regrow, I got.
Michael?
I will echo what has been said. It's been, it's been a tough week for the, for the city, but there's so many, so many good things that, that we can be proud of, of how the city has rallied. And I do, Scott did send me a note, he was going to come here to, to suggest the same thing Wendell talked about. I've got a note, did I read it, or is it?
Well, just put it up till.
Yeah, it echoes, but he talked about.
He's contacted me also, so I'm.
Thank you.
Okay. Pamela?
John, you're not going to de-Facebook friend me, are you?
No.
I would be devastated. I would be devastated if I didn't see those darling children on Facebook and their pictures. And yeah, you too.
I went to citywide cleanup. I want to thank the city for doing that. It's amazing. The guys were super nice, polite, you know. I asked Jim when I was there, I'm like, do, you know, like, I know it costs a lot, and he said that we really do recoup some, and so that's a good thing. But just looking at what's out there, and I'm just so thankful that our city does do it and spend the money, because all that stuff could be sitting around town. So that. But just looking at what's out there and I'm just so thankful that our city does do it and spend the money because all that stuff could be sitting around town. So that was, I was really appreciative of them all working that weekend.
I was appreciative of that too. It was.
Yeah, it's.
I was really, I was devastated.
You were?
Yeah, because they were cooking hot dogs while I didn't offer them.
Oh, no. It was breakfast, it was breakfast time when I was there. So that's all I have, thanks.
Well, it's hard to top what everybody else has said. Obviously, we're all in agreement. John, I think we're going to miss you. I think your input, the language has been really, really useful, so.
Thank you. Chief, thanks for, I know.
Yeah.
Appreciate all you. Howard, your turn.
That's good, yes.
That's right.
John, your turn.
Well, thank you all very much. Definitely has been a fun, a very fun journey. I mentioned last meeting, I've been joining the planning commission and zoning board back in 2015 and a lot of it has to do, when she's not here, but Callie. So I want to give her a lot of credit for my journey up to this point. Her, and at that time Floyd had come and made a presentation at our real estate brokerage and basically when I reached out to her and talked about being a new resident in Monticello, she reached out and asked if I wanted to be on the new formed PZB board. So kudos to Callie and her and Terry, of course, have always been great and still are and will be great people to lean on, you know, for this city. So I appreciate everything they've done and the rest of the city staff, of course, from being on the PZB and up to city council for always making, you know, our lives feel so welcomed and making our jobs sometimes, sitting in these chairs, seem not as difficult as sometimes as they may be, but the city staff I know works tirelessly in the background. So thank you guys for that. And definitely thank you to all the members who I served with on the PZB and everybody that I've served with here on the council. It's been great having discussions. We may not agreed on everything that we discussed or voted on, but I was just telling my wife earlier today, but that's the power of the vote, right, is you get a chance to speak your mind. You get a chance to give your perspective based on your experiences and how you see the best direction for those that you represent. And when you cast that vote, you have to be strong enough to accept the majority of that vote and support your fellow peers and their decision on that vote, however it may go. So I'm just excited. I was going to talk about too how just amazingly proud of the city I am, but like Mary said, you know, after this past week, it just shows itself. It's been so great to be a part of this community and we'll definitely miss being up here with everybody. So I'm excited to see the direction and the leadership that we have now. So thank you all for everything.
John?
Appreciate it. And that's it.
Chief Carter?
Yes. Thank you for all of your.
Thanks, Chief.
And good luck and all your members.
Thank you.
Now, I'll understatement, and I wrote it down so I didn't lose anybody or try to somebody, and I'm not going to guarantee that. Can I probably get a photo?
No.
I agree.
On May 9th, 2020, about 6:00 AM, I was contacted by Champaign Police Department, asked to have an officer outside the Oberheim. It was explained to me why they hurt. And it was uncertain how long we would have, we need to have an officer posted at the residence. So I lined up some days. At first, it seemed like a daunting task, hurry to have somebody posted at the residence for that mom. So I reached down to ILEAS and then tried their way down to departments in the area. With the answers, we received a tremendous response from officers who wanted to show their respect and love to the Oberheim family. All white agencies were sent or will send officers. Monticello Police Department, Pike County Sheriff's Office, Lake Forest Police Department, Mount Zion Police Department, Illinois State Police, Rantua Police Department, Decatur Police Department, Illinois State University Police Department, University of Illinois Police Department, Monroe Police Department. Officers from agencies who have already been here have come in to help, help call the citizens of Monticello. It was mentioned that people have brought them food and water and thanking them for what they did. They also admitted it's not something that they all receive in their jurisdictions in which they work. On Thursday, May 20th, prior to the procession, heading to the funeral home with Officer Oberheim, we placed flags along the route. We need to thank those who assisted with that as well. Kirby ambulance personnel, Crystal Alexander, Ethan Linus, students from Mohammed schools, students from Monticello schools, which include the wrestling team. My kids were there and Officer Schumard walked the whole distance, putting flags in front of the middle school about Super Ridge Street. Helping with traffic control that day was Monticello Fire Department, the Midfire Department, Monticello Public Works, Kirby ambulance staff. City staff and chamber of commerce personnel were also assisting to make the procession around welcoming to all those in the procession. I heard many comments from officers in the procession about the great support that was shown in respect, in respect to all of them. And now, this is what we posted today on the internet to let you know what's coming up, what's coming up. Monticello Police Department would like to inform the public that the following events that will take place in connection with the memorial services of slain Champaign police officer, the Monticello resident, Chris Oberheim. The funeral procession will be coming into Monticello at the I-72 Ridge Street exit 164. It will continue east on Ridge Street, Center Street, and turn north on State Street at the end at Cemetery Road. It is planned to have the first car in the procession at cemetery at 2:20 and the last car arriving at 2:50 on May 26, 2021. Those wishing to pay respects may do so by lining the sides of the route. Please note that there will be no parking on State Street, Center Street to Cemetery Road. Cemetery Road will be closed from market eastward toward the furthest cemetery entrance. We would also like to let the public know that Officer Oberheim is a true hero and there will be a 21-game salute which will take place at the cemetery.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Good.
And I have the honor of working with Chief's wife and he would never publicly talk about all he has done behind the scenes. But Chief, I'd like to thank you personally for all you have done for the family and community and sacrifices that your family makes every day.
I know he's been the go-to guy. Everybody calls the office. John is the person that we want to get that, want to talk to that person. So John, we appreciate everything you do. Thank you. City administrators report, Mr. Summers?
I don't know if I can follow that. You know, I would say, you know, in the COVID-19 pandemic of 2020, we saw this city and this community step up to the plate. This, what's going on this past week is, it makes me proud to live here, makes me proud that I work for such a great community. Mary's correct, Chief Carter. I don't know when he's last got some sleep, but on the day of the procession, he was, he was standing out in front of Oberheim's property from 4A to 8A and then went and did everything else. So your, all your efforts are greatly appreciated, Chief. I directed, I don't know how many people reached out, "Chief Carter, call Chief Carter. Here's what we're doing." We called Chief Carter. We had, I called Chief on his way over to get the flags last Thursday at night. "Chief, why don't you, why don't you run by us some blue or black balloons?" And he traveled around, how many, how many stores and bought every, there were no more blue or black balloons to be had in Champaign. And then we sent it air and blew them up and then put them all out, blue with black ribbons. Absolutely tremendous. A lot of effort has gone into that at all hours of the day by all city staff, public force department, police, obviously, fire, ambulance. I can't, I can't think. I'm going to miss somebody and upset somebody, but I don't know how many law enforcement folks were in that procession, 20 or more jurisdictions through Charleston and Mattoon that you provide, obviously Pike County and Decatur, Macon County. What a site and it'll be continuing later this week. But I definitely want to thank the residents of this community, the businesses of this community and what they've done. Absolutely tremendous. Thank you, John, for working alongside me and alongside all of us. Appreciate most of our conversation. But thank you, it's not an easy job. What you individuals get to do some nights, it's pretty tough, so thank you. Will be missed.
I'll be around.
I wish you well.
I'm not going far.
I know you, you're not going anywhere, just on the outskirts.
That's right.
You're still involved in this community.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Terry. Any other comments or anything before we adjourn the meeting?
If it would be possible, I would like to get a little group picture before we all leave.
Sure.
Okay.
You want it right now or can we adjourn it?
We can adjourn. I didn't, you know, I know Rodney runs out of here so fast.
Is there a motion?
He wears shorts.
Is there a motion to, what do we do it? Adjourn the meeting?
Yeah, so moved.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All in favor, I? Any opposed? No. This meeting is adjourned.